Call this meeting order. Tonight, we're gonna be leading the pledge by Mr. Greig.
Let your wishes through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Greig. I'd like to welcome everyone back. It seems like we've been on a long vacation the last month or whatever, and I hope everyone's enjoyed theirselves. We'll get back into the swing of things. I take it everybody's probably looked over the agenda for this week. Anybody have any questions? Ms. Halliday?
Consent agenda was where I started. On item D, I get the concept of a state contract and all of that kind of stuff, but we've always been able to deal with a dealership that's in Rutherford County here. Is there any possible way, and I'm expecting the answer to be no because of state contracts, but is there any possible way that we can trade inside of Rutherford County?
I mean, that dealership's in Jackson, Tennessee. What, as we go further in the year, cars, trucks are not available at different dealerships, so we have to go where we can find them until the next model comes in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So this is because they don't have available.
Right.
Oh, okay, alright, well, I just wanted to try and deal in Rutherford County if we could.
I just have a question. Are we, we use three-quarter ton pickup trucks quite a bit now?
Yes, we do. We put a service bed on and take the bigger truck one to hold up with the heavy bed on.
Yeah, I thought we probably were moving in or moved in that direction. Makes sense to me.
We have and we use a smaller Ranger and things for leads and people who don't carry that many tools. Although we found that the larger V8 now are more economical than the smaller Rangers were. Because they get a good gas mileage better than the smaller trucks.
Anybody else?
I across the I and J, the renewals of those leases. Smyrna Park and Rec, you know, just a thank you to them for that participation. Help me understand the contract with Middle Tennessee State. Which way is the money flowing there? I understand, you know, we've got...
It's an agreement, and Angel does a contract if you want to talk to her about it. See, they own the building and we operate the school system there, so we have some agreement. And they, maintenance, that's, part of that's been changed. Jeff, on the maintenance MTSU, we now, our maintenance department does some and we pay them for some. What is that breakdown exactly? Can you?
We basically take care of the stuff that we can do cheaper than them. And there's some things that they have contracts on, they bill us back for that. But we try to reach a balance between what we're doing and what they're doing to get the best, cheapest route out.
Okay. Is it right to characterize that contract that we're approving there? Is that a, is that a net zero contract, or are we paying? What's the financial impact of that contract?
Well, we get the ADM money for all the students and the things like that. Can you tell?
The net cost to us tends, since the renovations that we did, has tended to be just under ten to twenty-some thousand a year, net maintenance cost to us. Now, we have the utilities, the staff, everything else.
But we don't pay a rent per se? Okay.
This, in effect, will leave things as they have been under the previous arrangement, so nothing, I mean, unless Jeff knows it's an increased cost. My understanding of it, a fundamental change, it just continues our relationship with them for years.
Okay.
Ms. Carter?
They also put fifteen thousand dollars a year into an extraordinary maintenance account. Until it hits forty-five thousand, if we don't spend the money by then, they don't put any more in there until it drops below forty-five thousand. So we try to target projects every year and take care of that fifteen thousand until it continuously being put in there.
Good, good. Okay.
Anybody else?
Smyrna Parks and Recreation, of course, is the soccer fields over there in Smyrna, what that is.
All right, Mr. Oden, number eight.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I do have a question. And that is, and we've been approving them for quite some time, but these supplements, it's going in, band and all those kinds of things. How, are the kids raising money, or, I was thinking about the precautions. Do they say, okay, people in precautions, this is what it's gonna cost you? Or is it where the band and the boosters make fundraisers and it's just a blanket coverage?
It should be fundraisers, Mr. Oden.
We're not asking individual students for money to participate in these programs.
There could be some private instruction. There are some provisions for some of that, in which case that would be. But for the normal working with the band and all that, it's through fundraisers.
Would private instruction be paid through the school board?
No.
Or would it be paid individually by that student who's involved?
So, when, when these students pay several hundreds of dollars at the beginning of the school year for a band fee, that is going for...
Just the overall operations of the band?
Transportation.
Yes, sir.
Because I think it's a pretty hefty fee to be, just to be a member of the band.
Well, I, I just...
Have you gotten some feedback or something? That's what we, if you've got things specific, we need to check.
Well, I, you know, the general, the general feeling is it's costing my child a lot of money to participate in activities. And, you know, here, at the past board meeting, when Mr. Nippers said that, you know, that what he, what he was putting in on a regular basis, that has just kind of been on my mind since. And I was wondering if, if the boosters, and it's good organizations to have those, but what are they, what are they doing? And then, and how much money is it taking to do all of these special lessons or what have you that's coming through this office? And that's, that is a, I think, a concern of a lot of people in the, that students or their children are going to high school and middle school, and I think it's a legitimate concern. I can't play, I'm a good baseball player, but I don't feel like I can play because I can't come up with enough money. I enjoy a band, but my parents can't work enough to cover all of this. And when you look at this, when you add up all these funds, that's noticeable. Now, what's the answer for it? To have good programs, it costs, and people want good programs. So where's, where's that line? And I bring the question up more to bring it into the forefront of the educational community and the students themselves and parents. And do I have the right answer? I don't know. It's easy to come up with an answer, but it doesn't mean it's, it's the right answer or the best answer. It's a very good point, as we've spent this last several months that I've been here, going through, these are additional costs for education in a big way. I mean, to be part of that school, to really feel like you're doing what you want and getting a little extra from your education. So, I can't fathom going to a football game, the first game of the year in the fall, and it being quiet, there's no band, there's no cheerleaders, you know? No, we don't, as parents and citizens, we don't expect that at all. But there is a huge cost involved. We know that cheerleaders have to raise their funds, they have to come up with a lot of money. Football teams, they, they probably are about the only group that truly can say, we're self-supporting because the crowds are big enough to pay their bills. But so much of the other that we have for a child to participate in. I would hope, I know in times past, there have been opportunities for children whose parents couldn't afford that. Now, I guess that's maybe done on a case-to-case basis, but if I could run a four-two and weigh two-hundred-and-fifteen and, you know, six-three, they'd probably find a way to, to get me in a program. But what about that kid that's five-eight and just wants to participate, you know? Wants to be a part? I don't know the answer to that. Maybe that's just some information I'm looking here at the strategic plan that we're gonna talk about, and it's just telling our story. I think this is part of our story, a part of the story of Rutherford County School Board and the education that these kids are getting, you know, the whole ball of wax. We want the social education as well as the technical and scholastic education. So, I think it's a great question. I'd like to know more about it, just to know more about it.
The, interesting enough, I've been talking to you probably for much of the last year about the change in the vending machines for the high schools and all of that being cut back and all. There was a little crack in the wall, Jeff knows about it, that the state of Tennessee is a line. We told the principals the other day, twelve days, basically we're looking at, that they can... You know, to, we told them, you can, up to twelve to where you could do a fundraiser or something like that, you know, for the lunches, to the hot lunch program. But the problem you run into here, you've got lots of employees you gotta pay too. At the same time, you're balancing, I mean, you've got all those people to be paid. And so if you, if you're not serving the federal hot lunch program, where does that funding come from? Are you gonna wind up having to raise the lunch prices for everybody? So it's just such a balance all the time, and certainly with athletics. You know, the, when the archery program started, Mr. Greig, it was interesting that several principals told me, you know, some of the other kids that have, wouldn't real physical athletes to play some of the things you're talking about, were really attaching themselves to archery. We have so many programs, you know, now for students to do, but most of them, most of them do not pay for themselves. That's the bottom line. They just, you know, if you're gonna travel or do anything, they just, you don't have ticket sales and things to support those. You know, your golfs and just cross countries and that sort of thing. It's just, it's tough for the principals and all to come up with ways to pay for it. And unfortunately, very often, it's the participants that wind up, you know, doing a fundraising of some type to share in that cost. I don't, I don't know the answer either.
I know, I just speak from my past, I don't know how they do things now, but both our kids, one with softball, one with football, did the fundraisers. One with the softball, and I believe I'm correct, and that they still work the Titans games down in Nashville. And I forget what the figure was, you know, you get so many dollars credit every time you work. It seems, it seems like it may have been five-hundred-dollar fee, but if you work your games or whatever, you pretty well work your money, get your money that way. And there'd be times that some people were just adamant they weren't gonna work, they'd just pay the fee or whatever it was. I know la, last week, I was working for a guy out by Segal High School, and his son played football, and they're selling smart cards. So, I was just gonna give him a donation, but he was pretty adamant, I'll take these two smart cards along with it, so. But that was how, they were raising their funds out there was the smart cards. Now, I'm sure using smart cards like that to operate a football program, you'd have to do something beyond smart cards, would be my guess. But our experience is that, yes, they've always did the fundraising, you know? And I don't know how band does it and all that stuff. I mean, looks like their, their budgets are a whole lot, a whole lot bigger than what we were dealing with, so. I don't know, I mean...
Well, I guess my number-one question was, for kids to participate in activities, they're not asked to pay upfront to get to participate.
I would hope, personally, I would hope that they would have the opportunity to raise the funds.
I mean, it's... You know, if we ask, that's the answer we get back. But students have the opportunities to fundraise for that. Of course, your band, your big thing is your fruit sales and stuff. That's probably one of the biggest things over the years that you've seen related to that. I mean, cheerleading is expensive now, too. But that's a lot of private lessons tied to that. That's one of the things, because it's so athletic.
Well, I can understand private lessons and that type of thing, but if someone is walking into the school Monday through Friday at one o'clock and meeting with a class of, a certain group of students, are those students having to pay? That's...
I wouldn't think so in that case, do you?
No.
No, I don't, I don't, I can't think of a case where that might be.
Yeah. One of the things I have seen in approving fundraisers, looking over the supplements, too, there are, this is going to vary by school, but we are going to have parent groups who are going to be determined to raise more money and expand the program compared to other schools.
Competition between schools?
I think that's part of it. They want their band or their team to be the best.
I think you see that in athletics as well. I don't think it's just in the arts, but my experience has been that it's often presented to the student that we anticipate that this extracurricular program is gonna cost this amount. This is our budget for the year. Years past have led us to this, and your fair share is, Terry mentioned, five-hundred dollars, seven-hundred dollars, eight-hundred dollars, whatever it might be. Here are the opportunities you have to earn that money. Some people choose to write the check and dismiss themselves from the fundraising process. And at that point, they've satisfied their fair share, and they move on through the program without the burden of fundraising or that, that kind of idea. Nonetheless, you still get to the end of the year, the end of the program, and that organization is left with how many people met their fair share. And it's never a hundred percent that met their fair share. And often, there are, there are individuals who have not met any portion of their fair share of the expenses of that organization. If it's a good organization, they've budgeted to carry those people through. But I think the nature of these extracurricular organizations are to instill the kind of pride and self-respect, taking responsibility, that everybody needs to do their fair share. And everybody's gotta pull their weight to be a part of the team or to be on the line, you know, in the, in the horn line or the percussion line and, and do their part. And so it's kind of hand in glove, you know, one, one leads the other. To be a good part of the organization, you've gotta participate in helping to fund the organization. But those who have much, probably more is expected, and those who have a little, I think that we do a good job, probably more as citizens and as a good community than anything else, in taking care of others who may not have as much. I think everybody's getting the opportunity to participate.
This was a hot topic with our booster groups a few years back. And one of the things that booster groups cannot do, they, they cannot set, the fundraising needs to be for the overall group. They can set a goal, but that's all it is. And if a child and his or her family don't meet that goal, you know, no punitive actions, we are not even supposed, those groups are not even supposed to use any kind of declining account, balance, or anything. It, it's a violation of the IRS tax-exempt status of their group. And we hit that when I meet with the booster parents and all that, we go over that, and I go over it with the principals. But that is something all of our groups have got to watch because they could wind up incurring tax liability and penalty and interest and all that if they're not very careful.
So sometimes a child may be told, look, we would like each of y'all to raise five-hundred dollars. But that is a like-to instead of a must. And they can't go beyond that. That satisfies my curiosity, thank you.
We're adding into our process, too, what you said earlier about requiring these booster clubs to come to. Ms. McLeod's working on that to come to Mr. Sandvik's training, so. So we're in the process of getting that word out and dealing with that, so.
I guess I can appreciate the fact that one of the schools used to have a school of excellence that was kind of their motto. And I don't have a problem with people striving to do that. And I certainly appreciate the schools participating in daily activities that would encourage responsibility, being where you're supposed to be, when you're supposed to be there. I think it's something that's extremely important. But I think when it comes to money and student activities, we cannot push that to the side and not review that on a very detailed, systematic way, that people are well aware of that, that are dishing out the money. I think that's extremely important. This being on the consent agenda is fine, but don't let that just be a stamp of approval without reviewing it. I think it's absolute, from my point of view, it's absolutely necessary to look at that. It's too much money on these boards, guys, week after, meeting after meeting.
All right, number eight, Mr. Oden.
Number eight is Mr. Clardy's status update, which has been a while on the building program. We decided to do that tomorrow night because tonight, we're gonna do a follow-up on the Affordable Care Act, and Mr. Sam is gonna do that, so we kind of split that for you since this pertains probably to more everybody, and the Affordable Care Act's mostly internal accounting and all that, at the legal conference, as several of you may have heard. So we, we'll let him do that tonight and follow up tomorrow night with a status program on this one, if that's okay with you.
Number nine, facilities?
Okay, facilities. This is technology, internet filter security. The technology department is requesting approval for a Dell SonicWall appliance. Dell SonicWall's management and reporting solutions provide a comprehensive architecture for centrally creating and managing security policies, providing real-time monitoring, traffic analysis, and delivering intuitive reports. The Dell SonicWall is a need to manage the bandwidth demands by faculty and students to ensure a safe and productive use of internet resources. The cost of the Dell SonicWall is ninety-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and forty-five cents. This includes three years of maintenance support. Recommend approval, motion to approve the purchase of Dell SonicWall as presented. Might mention something here. Even though we got the two million dollars from the state to double our bandwidth, to put in additional devices, you have copies about bring your own device, I think, in your packet tonight and all. But especially, if we don't have a way to manage this, I don't think we can buy enough bandwidth to deal with it. This, this product allows us to get down to the user and what they're logged into, and literally to go in and with the IP address, and Mr. Nippers, you can help with this, with the IP address and all, with that device and all, we can actually cut that device off if we have to. If somebody's doing YouTube, I maybe found one student that was playing YouTube for hours, we didn't have a way to narrow it and see. Or streaming Pandora, music streaming or something, it needs to be in our music classes and stuff. But for us to efficiently use what we have and make it work for us, I think we're gonna have to have some way to open and close the gates. And you know more about this than I do, Mr. Nippers, so you join in if you wanna show where we are.
Basically, and I think, Ms. Chris, there were two. That every device we have sitting here today has got its own IP address. That's nation, that's worldwide, really. And this software, once you go into our Rutherford County website, that IP address can be tracked around. So we, he's, Mr. Oden's right, we can go in and turn that device, block that device, rather, from, not turn them off, but it can block their devices. That's what it's...
It's about bandwidth, isn't it?
It's about that, bandwidth, keep a good bandwidth, but it's also to keep up with what they're doing. You know, they don't need to be going out there to dirty websites and stuff like that, even though we already block those. But, you know, kids, they can get around anything.
So if I send something through my device while I'm at school, and it's deemed to be inappropriate, then you can go back and track what I had sent through my device and make that determination?
It should be able to, yes.
See, one of our, when we were last year doing some piloting of some of the online assessments and stuff like that, we literally ran into times where it just, we were trying to train teachers and all, and Mr. Zago and them, there wasn't enough bandwidth left. It's like a hosepipe, and how much water can you, you know, got a half-inch, you got a three-quarter inch? You know, your pipeline's just so big, so how much can you stream even though you're close to the speed of light streaming? There is a limit to it. And so what this allows you to do is control things that are consuming large quantities of your bandwidth that may not be related to your primary mission, what you want to do when teachers are using it as an instructional tool.
Right, I mean, if I could follow up with that. Like YouTube, streaming YouTube takes a lot more bandwidth than just regular us looking right there.
What we're doing, yeah.
Because right here is an on-and-off thing. Once it downloads that iPad, it has no use to go back to the internet unless you go to another page or, or whatever. But with YouTube and things like that, it is constant, just flowing right through. And that's what Mr. Oden was talking about, this bandwidth. We, YouTube takes so much of it, the rest of the iPads cannot... We, YouTube takes so much of it, the rest of the iPads cannot connect. And you see that at home, if you're at home, you can tell when kids get out of school because the speed of your computer during the day is, or mine is so fast. And at three, three-thirty, it starts slowing down and you're just sitting there waiting for a page to turn or whatever. You know, by then, kids are at home or just got home and, man, they're hitting those internets. So it's a good thing to get this software to track it.
And what else? All right, B.
Okay. B is Wilson Elementary School canopy. Principal John Dinkins has requested permission to construct a new canopy at Wilson Elementary School. The canopy will be approximately fifteen feet by thirty feet and used for drop-off and pickup. It will be a great help in protecting students from the elements during the inclement weather. The canopy will be placed adjacent to the gym on the Angie Drive side of the school building. School funds of approximately three thousand, five hundred dollars will be used to purchase and erect the canopy. The concrete work will be completed by the Rutherford County Schools Maintenance Department. Recommend approval, motion to approve construction of a fifteen-foot by thirty-foot aluminum canopy at Wilson Elementary School as presented. This is near the back, is kind of what you would know for special ed kids and some of the other things that you kind of know where the front sits, but it's kind of to the back for those students.
All right, number ten.
Number ten is a transportation summary. This is for two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year, and this is an information only, no action required. The Transportation Department ended the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year transporting a total of twenty-six thousand, twenty-one Rutherford County students. Six hundred and eighty of them were special education and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and thirteen were regular education students, compared to two thousand twelve, thirteen, when we transported a total of twenty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight students, which is a two-point-nine percent increase. And coincidentally, that's about our growth, right? If you remember, it was about two-point-nine. We also transported two hundred and twenty-five Atlas students. This is academic time, leads to achieving students, Rutherford County's Assistant Program for Families in Transition in two thousand thirteen, fourteen versus two hundred and four in the two thousand twelve, thirteen, or a nine-point-three percent increase. We currently have two hundred and thirty-seven buses under contract. Thirty-two of them are special education and two hundred and five are transit buses. All buses are inspected annually by the State of Tennessee Department of Safety and a sticker denoting compliance is attached to each bus. The district owns thirty-two activity buses, which are also inspected by the State of Tennessee Department of Safety. We have two hundred and thirty-nine regular bus drivers and one hundred and five substitute bus drivers. There are ninety other school district employees who hold a valid certified driver's license, CDL. This equates to four hundred and thirty-four drivers that must be monitored for drug testing and the T-DOT physical requirements. For the school year two thousand thirteen, fourteen, we had two personal injury accidents and seventeen property damage accidents for a total of nineteen accidents compared to two thousand twelve and thirteen, when we had two personal injury accident and twenty-two property damage accidents for a total of twenty-four or twenty-point-eight percent decrease. And I remember you telling us about a million miles or so, what, that we drive in a year or so.
I'll break that next time.
Comments, questions?
Notice that we've got three that have turned in, that are contracts.
Yeah, we talked to somebody at the last meeting. We said, when somebody started one in, now we've had three.
So are we into the second list now?
Yes, we're in the second list, we're at number seven on the list of sixty-three.
Okay.
We have teachers, maybe educational assistants who are, who have their CDL, correct?
Coaches, assistant coaches.
Yeah, coaches, assistant coaches. And there's a need for them. They're required every two years to have a physical. Every year, okay. Do we pay for that physical for these people? Because the main purpose for most of them having that is to transport students to activities, I would assume.
True. By far, it doesn't take for whether the school or.
The school, okay. And that'd be a good thing to know, I think, because I think we should pay for it. If we're expecting them, because of physical every year, and of course, insurance may pay for it, yes, but, and the driver's license in and of itself costs a little bit more, so.
Is there on our health insurance, they can also use our clinics, it would be no charge.
Okay, so they can get their physical done through the system without.
That just changed this year. Now there's federal requirement that DOT physicals be performed by certified federal DOT physical doctors.
Okay.
That has in years past, what Ms. Barnes said is exactly right. But now you have to go to a certified doctor that's been certified by the federal government to perform those. That was to eliminate the possibility of someone who was asked because he was a friend of the doctor or whatever. Now they must go through this more rigorous examination.
Is there a difference between the federal licensing and the state licensing, or are they one and?
No, CDL is federal requirement.
Okay, so the state really just issues the driver's license for that person who has satisfied those requirements?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
I was asked that question by a bus driver about because you can drive an eighteen-wheeler and you can have a physical every two years, but the State of Tennessee T-DOT requires bus drivers to have one every year. So for parents and.
I'm with you now because mine doesn't give me permission to drive a school bus, yeah. But the school bus is the requirement for every year.
Correct.
Do you anticipate that we'll pursue certification inside of our clinics? And is that a question more for the county's HR department than it is for anybody in our school system?
Well, it's really, that came down from the federal government. And there are listing of those that are licensed to do that. And that may be something that we could go through the insurance department to see what it would take for our physician assistants or whatever to provide that service. That would be the way to go through that, would be to check with the insurance, go that through a thorough.
Thanks.
So we don't have a doctor that does anything, do we have a doctor? Okay, so that might be a route too, to take, to get that doctor to be willing.
They're not at all locations in all.
Yeah, willing to be certified to.
I remember these statistics being reported on the agenda a year ago, and they were down, the number of accidents and incidents were down last year. So to see them down again, you know, it's one thing to see a one-year trend. I just, for some reason, I happen to remember, that's at least a two-year trend. And congratulations to the Transportation Department for that.
All right.
I think we'll go for three.
Yeah.
Number eleven.
Number eleven, I'm going to ask Mr. Tackett to come up. I'll kind of read the first part, but I won't steal the bullets here, but kind of how it started. At the request of board member, Mr. Aaron Holiday, the Rutherford County Schools guidelines and safety procedures have been reviewed. Rutherford County Schools Athletic Director, Tim Tackett, met with a representative group of current cheerleader coaches from both the middle and high school levels. A follow-up meeting was held with Mr. Odom, Mr. Sandvik, and Ms. McLeod. The following recommendations are the results of those meetings. And I'll turn it over to you so you can answer their questions and talk about this a little.
All right, thank you, distinguished members of the board. Nice to be in front of you instead of there, as you debated some of the other issues. I met today with athletic directors from middle school and high school. We met at Blackwood Middle School, and I want to thank Mr. Will Shelton for being such a gracious host there. And all schools were represented at those meetings. Middle schools met first, and we discussed many things, this amongst them being, and I mentioned that this would be coming to the board. Julie Webb, who is the Athletic Director at Rock Springs Middle School and a cheerleader from her glorious past. And Todd Williamson, who is the Athletic Director at Oakland Middle School, who has daughters who have participated, had some issues, and I think very valid issues. I think I have sent, I'm not sure, but I think I've sent the ACC, AACCA rules. And it's about six pages worth of rules, which I think are very important. That's what Mr. Holiday and we were concerned about, to make sure that there were some safety rules in place. And when they, when I was asked that question, I clearly did not know. And that's from a former principal that probably should have known some time ago whether they did or did not. We all see the cheerleaders do lots of stuff and stunts and sometimes get a little bit amazed at what they do. But as long as those are done in safe environments with proper training and so forth, we recognize that those are legal. But I gave you the last page of those guidelines this evening before the meeting. And this was the issue for the middle schools. And because we apparently have several competitive middle school squads that will be very much affected if this goes into place where the restriction for elementary, middle school, and junior high schools, in addition to the above rules for high schools, basket tosses, elevator tosses, and similar multi-base tosses would be prohibited. They are concerned that that is going to be a real hornet's nest for all of us if that's the way we go. And so I asked a question, I said, so how are they doing that? And they said, well, there are other organizations that will allow that and under the proper trainings and so forth. So my request of you this evening is that give me the opportunity to meet with a larger representative group of middle school. Because I think probably what occurred when that met, we did have middle schools represented, but apparently did not have middle schools that have competitive cheerleader squads in place. And so rather than pass something on high that affects people there and it'll maybe end up in your lap, I request that we table this till next meeting to give me an opportunity to further investigate and see if there's another organization that we might partner with or whether this is the best route to go. This may still be where we need to go, but I would think that we really do need to look at this further to see if we can find ways to justify to our cheerleading squads at the middle school level that they be allowed to follow this. And what I told them, I said, if we pass this, you can't do these things because that's what, we're saying we're going to go by AACCA rules. And those rules, if that's what we pass, say you can't do that. They asked that we table it or take some more investigative time to see if there's not another group that could certify our coaches, make sure that those things are all in place and protect those competitive squads. And I said I would bring that to the board. So that's my request of you this evening, is to table this for now and let me have the opportunity to meet with or discuss further with cheerleading coaches and so forth to see if there's a way we can make this work where everybody can be satisfied. Because we certainly, I don't think it's in our best interest to do something that would keep them from doing what they apparently are already doing and apparently legally doing so. But that's where we're at right now, and I'd be glad to answer your questions.
What's your anticipated timeframe for?
I'm sorry?
What's your anticipated timeframe for?
I don't see any reason I can't meet with a group of principals, or excuse me, cheerleaders before this week's out, today being Tuesday. I'd anticipate certainly by next board meeting, we should have an opportunity to give you some type of thing. You meet in two or three weeks, I assume? It shouldn't take, it shouldn't take long. I fully believe either meeting with them or at least polling the cheerleader sponsors to see where we're at, that should not take any longer than that period of time. We should be able to get this taken care of within the next board meeting.
Are you aware of other groups that have a certification-type process?
I'm not, but according to Ms. Webb, there is. That was her point, and Julie's a top-notch person. I mean, I really, she's a person that I trust a great deal, not only through her athletic director role there at Rock Springs, but just personally, she's a person that has a great validity, as far as I'm concerned. So she was clearly of the opinion that there are ways that we can make this work and allow our middle schools to do what they're doing within some framework or ground rules of another organization. That's what we're going to, that's what we would discuss, and she seems to think that there is.
Would that require maybe some protective equipment or anything like that?
I'm not sure. I mean, clearly what the purpose of all this is, is to assure that our cheerleaders are in a safe environment. And the example I've used with cheerleaders when I met with them and ADs that if you are in a room or an area that is properly equipped, but for one reason or another, the air conditioner's out, the lights are out, you can't go there and you've got to move to the hallway, then at that point in time, there are many things you can't do that you could have done in that environment that you can do over here that you can't do over here. So that's what we'd be looking for, is making sure that whatever those rules are from a national association. And I think we have to just be clear and make sure our cheerleader sponsors are comfortable that we are not just going out and finding a set of rules because that's what we want to do, but to have some assurance that those rules are clearly within the best interest of our student athletes, who in this case happen to be cheerleaders. And again, according to Julie and Todd both, they seem to think that that opportunity was out there.
One of the primary motivators for me was the success that our cheerleading squads have had and the fact that we're placing cheerleaders from our high school squads into full scholarship opportunities at major universities because of the outstanding training and opportunities and exposure that they're getting through our cheerleading program. That being said, it may indeed be that we find in this middle school circumstance that because of the nature of a middle school, sixth through eighth grade, and the maturing process that happens during those years, you may find that one season it may be appropriate because of the physical maturity level of the squad, and then the next season it would not be, and it draws into a circumstance where you have to make a judgment call. And I think that may be the motivation that we find in the AACCA, that they say, you know what? Sixth through eighth grade years, we just can't know that we've got the physical ability in order to be able to achieve some of these aerial type of opportunities. And so they've drawn a clear line. That's what we get into when we get into, do we have nice, clean, clear lines? I think Mr. Tackett is absolutely taking the right course of action here to investigate this further and see, I would caution my fellow board members, we may find the need for an unpopular stance in middle school that is of that nature. Some seasons it might be appropriate, other seasons it may not be appropriate just because of the individual makeup of who's on the squad and what their physical maturity is. By the time you get to ninth grade in high school, then there's a commonality that you can kind of depend on. So it'll be very interesting to see what this brings about.
Well, you bring up a really good point, and that's why I think it's important that the eight people I'm facing recognize that if it's determined throughout this process, and you determine that even though these are more strict than another set of circumstances or guidelines we can go by, if you feel like this is in best interest of students, then that's what you need to go. But you will find some folks that are going to be a little bit distraught with all that kind of thing. We need to find a set of rules that you can be comfortable with and we can all be comfortable with that are safe for our kids, and if it includes allowing these other events, then so be it.
And there may be language that we find.
Sure.
That aerial is permitted but not inversion and things like that. And that may be the difference that we find between AACCA and NCA or something of that nature. So we'll see what the investigation brings.
I clearly think a two-week wait is worth that as a, so we'll have answers as opposed to imposing something now that somebody comes along and says, why didn't you think of this? And the answer should be, well, two weeks from now, we can say clearly, we did think of that, and we still feel like this is the best route to go. And if that's the decision that you choose to make, then at that point in time, I think we've got a more educated decision to make.
Is there an opportunity to involve a specialist, a, I wouldn't call it a pediatric, but maybe a juvenile orthopedist that would know, you know, about growth plates and joints for, and muscle strength for that age group? Is there an authority here in middle Tennessee that we might inquire as, you know, and get an objective, you know, opinion from that individual?
My opinion would be, if you ask Dr. Jernigan, you'd get one answer. You talk, Dr. Blair, you might get a different answer. So I think you could, could in fact do that. I think AACCA has, and I think the point that was made, there are other organizations that have national reputations that support we're a safe and legitimate organization that can be done. that can be done. That's the direction I would think I would go. Clearly, with MTSU and our background, or backyard, I should say, surely there's some information I could gather from them, the cheerleader coach there, the people that are there to say, is this the right to go? Now, what I do know is the five people I did meet with from our cheerleading staff all felt very comfortable with what AACCA does. That I do know. And from them, there was not another organization mentioned and so forth. So I'm not going to say that we're not going to come back with the same recommendation. But based upon what Mr. Williamson and Ms. Webb shared with me today, I feel like it'd be in our best interest to wait a couple of weeks and make sure we got it right, as opposed to rush through what we've got in your hands right now.
How many, as far as all the schools go?
How many of them actually have certified instructors? Or do you have a number on that?
I don't have a number on that. The concern that the five that I did meet with was that they all are not. And that's all I know. That's all I would say, that they're all not. And to me, whether we require AACCA or whatever else certification or not, I do think it's important we adopt a set of guidelines and rules that they go by. And I think when we had our staff meeting, it was mentioned that from a standpoint of liabilities concerned, certification would go a long way in making sure that we kept ourselves on the good side of a liability situation. So I think certification is important. But for sure, we need to make sure that at the end of the day, we have a set of guidelines we can put in each principal, in each AD, and each cheerleader coach in their hand to say, these are the guidelines that we expect you to follow. And as of right now, we don't feel like we have a consistent set of guidelines within our schools.
So if I understand right, that it's your go or our go, hopefully, of the board, to have the guidelines and make sure everyone's certified?
I think that certification issue is secondary to the guidelines to some degree. And I think it was explained, the article I read that had dealt with the issue and probably came from the local paper. A couple of people who've been involved for a good while and really have this interest are certified. Yet, school may start, and we don't have that cheerleading coach. So we have to find that cheerleading coach. And that cheerleading coach will not be certified. So certification is secondary, in my way of thinking, to the guidelines. And I think you're right on track with, let's go ahead and give you a little time to investigate further, see what else is out there. And then indeed, if this is what we settle on, those are the guidelines that we're going to deal with. But I just can't fathom getting everybody certified because of the turnover. And it's a tough job.
Well, I know Ms. McLeod mentioned the certification being important as far as liabilities are concerned. And, you know, to me, the layperson, it's more important to have some specific guidelines in place that people understand and can follow. The certification just simply should mean that Gary Yeeks understands the terminology better than somebody who didn't go through that kind of a training situation.
Maybe that I'm qualified to do that particular task.
Now, on that side of things, you know, the up and down part of online education sometimes are questioned as to just how much you can go through on a 75-minute or $75 course there. You know, I don't know. All that's up for debate. I think at this point in time, we're just looking to spend more time and due diligence to be sure that we get this thing as right as we can get it, as opposed to rushing into something that's there. And I'm just really glad that we had the AD meeting today where we had this brought to our attention.
So the certification is an online course?
Certification's an online course, yes.
That's just my personal view. I'm big on liability. And I think Ms. McLeod and Mr. Reed both can vouch for it. We face enough liability on a daily basis. And if it costs us 7,500 bucks to get somebody certified, I'd say we're way ahead of the game. That's what intrigued me originally when Mr. Holliday brought all this up. I'd like to know that we've got somebody out there certified teaching these men and women, you know, to do the stuff in the correct manner.
Well, let me make this point. A person like myself could coach cheerleading squad as long as we stand there, yay, rah, and whatever. And we don't flip, and we don't tumble, we don't whatever. So if you get into a situation where you don't have, if we go the certification route and that person's not there, for a period of time, that squad's going to have to lay low and be groundbound. I think that's what the term that they use. A competition squad is not going to go without a certified coach very long. You know, so if you've got a squad that's out here doing all this kind of stuff, they will go and seek out and find with all those dollars that you're worried about, how we pay them. They'll find somebody to do that and pay them whatever it takes to get that taken care of. And once that person's in place and certified, then they can go back and flip and tumble. But until that happens, during that time period, if they're not certified, then what you would do is you'd just have to lay it down and go out there and just do what cheerleaders did back when I was in school, which was stand there and lead cheers.
And is that a portion of this group's policy, that that leader must be certified in order to do A, B, C, and D?
Yeah. I mean, there's several things in there. There was mention, as I say, when certain requirements can't be met, then the group has to be groundbound-
Okay.
-at that point in time. And as I say, if the physical abilities to have the match or the spotters or whatever are not available to you that day, then you just can't do them. You have to do all this stuff, you have to have A, B, C, D, and E all in place. And part of that would be a certified person.
Cheerleading coaches are supplemented positions, so we can do some requirements there too. They don't get as much supplement as a head football or basketball coach or something. But they are supplemented positions, so it's okay for us to require certain, I think, requirements along with that.
I'm going to have to get past the visual of you leading the cheerleading squad.
I understand that. How about you and me, Mr. Blair?
All right, Mr. Tackett. Look forward to hearing back from you.
Okay, thank you.
Basically pull that in from our, is everybody-
Everybody good with that?
Yes, sir.
Kind of pull it from the budget, I mean, from the agenda right now.
We'll put that on next agenda, Ms. Michael. Number 12.
Number 12 is the appointment of hearing officers for teacher termination hearings. Board policy and state law require the board to maintain a list of qualified individuals who expressed a willingness to serve as hearing officers for teacher termination hearings. The following is a list of individuals from the Tennessee School Board Association list who have expressed their willingness to serve in this capacity. Thomas Stovall, Beretta Shipley, Jane Wheatcraft, and Toby Gillie. Recommend approval. Motion to approve the list of potential hearing officers as presented.
Since one of the potential officers is a candidate for a judgeship, would that take him off the list if he won that election?
That's correct. He would not be able to serve.
Okay, so he would just automatically be removed?
Right.
We didn't have any pending right now, so you're making a list if you do need it.
All right, 13.
When we attended a legal conference, there were several questions asked, that, you know, we concerned, are we meeting certain conditions of the Affordable Care Act? So came back, actually gave Mr. Sandvik the presentation we saw to look through it. And we had a kind of a rush-through thing that they said could take many hours, and we got a couple of hours or so on it. So some of the most critical questions in all, I asked him to come tonight and do a presentation. So get your questions ready, and we'll see how we kind of match you up for this. He has a, you have a handout which covers some of this for you. But, Mr. Sandvik.
The school system and the county are really in very good shape for implementing the remaining portions of the Affordable Care Act. And on the insurance committee, we've been looking at these items since soon after the act was passed. And some of the changes that we have made to our plan have either been presented to you as insurance updates, part of the budget process, items like that. And we haven't gone into the details of this implementation and monitoring, other than reassuring you that we would be in compliance. And we feel we are ready for the January 2015 changes. Just the current year, the current year that began July 1st budget, our insurance, medical insurance in the GPS budget, that excludes the cafeterias and the federal funds, is $39.8 million. After staff, that is now our largest expenditure, the next largest. And medical insurance and the transitional self-insurance fee, and I'll say a bit more about that later on. We're fortunate because our insurance plan largely met the legal requirements of the new law when the law passed. 30 hours per week was already our threshold to offer medical insurance. We're fixed there. Our individual coverage on our copay plan was and still is under 9.5% of our employees' individual income. We look at our nine-month custodians and EAs and make sure that that premium stays affordable for them. Initially, we didn't think our HRA account, health reimbursement account plan, might qualify. But we have gotten an opinion from Cigna that it does qualify as an acceptable plan under the ACA Act. We charge nothing for individual coverage in that plan. We don't have any price discrimination issues. For all of our insurance, all board and county employees pay the same. And we or the county pay the same for the employer cost. No problems there. And the act didn't cause us budget issues, the budget issues that some school systems face because of those above three points. One of my friends, her system was discussing last year dropping, a year ago, dropping all of the support staff to 29-hour week employees to, because they did not, they could not afford the medical insurance change. Last year, we got an estimate from our benefits consultant that the Affordable Care Act is only responsible for 3% of the recent rate increases we have seen. Medical inflation has been the rest of it. And just to clarify, we still have employees who think that Board of Ed employees pay more for their medical insurance than county general. We don't. We pay the same total, but we pay it over 10 months. County general employees pay it over 12 months. Most all of our employees, the large majority are 10-month. And that makes sense for us. But we do, both groups pay the same. Federal reporting was one of the bullets they mentioned in y'all's presentation that you saw. Cigna, as part of their contract, handles our monthly and annual reporting to the IRS. We do our own transitional self-insurance fee. The insurance department does that. And we just paid our first transitional fee of $633,696, or $63 per person. I don't have quite enough in the budget for next year's. The fee next year drops to $44 per person, and I'm going to have to amend a little in to cover that. But the count came up a bit higher than we had looked at when we developed the budget last year. Under audit issues, the group we will have to watch, part-time employees under 30 hours per week, interims, and seasonal staff who are part-time during the school year. We have a few people who work in the teacher material center with textbooks and all. We may have some custodians who work more hours in the summer than they do during school years. Those are areas we will be monitoring and checking. It's possible that some of our supplemented volunteer positions could become an issue later on. But most, and it's if we pay the supplement, not if band boosters or football boosters pay a supplement, most of our supplemented positions are paid to full-time employees already. So, you know, that's something we will be a little on the lookout for. And back when we issued our RFP for substitute teachers, we did, issued an addendum and asked that the costs that the different providers would charge us, that those ACA, Affordable Care Act, costs would be included for when the act went into place. So we were ready last January, and Advantage, and they have some initials that I can't remember.
Advantage XPO.
Advantage HPO?
XPO.
XPO, yeah. They were ready to implement that with their employees that we contract for in January, but deferred it for a year. So we'll move into that mode in January. I don't think they'll have that many employees who qualify. From their bid, I don't think they anticipate having that many qualify. And we tightened up our changes to scheduled hours for our part-time employees, those under 30 hours a week, back in January 2013 because of this legislation. And we have a plan in place for monitoring our part-time employees that we'll be implementing this year. For this first year, only 70% of our staff has to be included in the offering. After that, it'll drop to 90, whatever. It will go up to 95%. We'll have a 5% threshold for error. That should not be a problem for us. Because again, we've tightened up on our part-time employees. If a principal calls, I've got a four, I have someone out, I have a four-hour custodian. Well, your four-hour can go up to five and a half hours while that person is out. But he or she cannot go up to six or eight. So we're sure to keep them under that threshold. And if they become a full-time employee, we offer them benefits then. But that's something we'll be monitoring. We really have to watch that in cafeteria fund also. And throughout this process, we've met, we had a contract with Deloitte Touche for initial planning. We've worked with Cigna, various actuaries, all of that. Our goal has been to maintain this self-insured medical insurance that we have, and to make sure that all the Board of Ed and county employees who are or become eligible are offered insurance. And again, we're confident we're on that path to have everything ready to go. Everything but the part-time employees is already up and running from our side. And as long as we meet that affordability test, if any of our employees or their family members do go to the healthcare exchange, we aren't subject to any penalties, as long as we are affordable under that 9.5% and offer the insurance. That's what we have to watch. So.
I think as a board member, my concern was the astronomical fines that we could get if we did not meet those.
Right. And we don't see that, our reporting is in place. We reported the, on our W, and I always have to think W2 versus W4, it's terrible, for the year that ended, the end of 2012, December 31st, 2012, we reported the medical insurance we had paid for all of our employees. So we've been doing that for two years now. Cigna has, every major provider has the reporting in place. I don't anticipate any problems there. This little two-page where the seal is in color that I gave you, that goes to all of our employees within 14 days of when they are hired. And I stuck it in there just so you could see some of the, it answers some of the questions that employees should have. And it provides our information about the healthcare plan. And that comes down to the insurance department getting the packages out and us following through and making sure word gets to all of our staff members who are eligible. The third package I, sheet I gave you in the package, is it shows, the top three lines of numbers show our rates September through December of this year. For the various, we have 12 different groups, which is fun to track. And then the commission- And then, the commission voted several years ago to slowly move toward eighty percent employer pay for spouse and dependent coverage. This, so this year, it'll drop from eighty-seven to eighty-six percent. That is the increase our employees will see. There is not an increase to the rate, but there is that slow increase to what you pay for dependent coverage.
Do you have classifieds not listed here?
They are the same.
Because they're the same.
Yes. We moved away, back when Lois was here, when we went to the four groups, we took care of that inequity. It used to be certified individuals paid more than classified individuals, but certified families paid less than classified families. And that ended.
Five, six years ago, Paula, probably?
Yeah. Well before the Act passed, that was in place for us. So, but I think we've got it under control.
I do have one question on the substitute teachers. Do you feel like that could affect us indirectly to the contract with, as far as?
We have it, we have a new set of rates that will go into effect in January twenty fifteen, which have, it is a minor increase that will then, that.
And that will cover the.
Advantage thinks it will cover their costs. And if they have miscalculated, the next time we go out with an RFP, we'll see an increase in it. But the prices we were quoted went from about doubling our cost, once the Affordable Care Act went into place, all the way down to Advantage XPOs, which was a fairly minor increase. We did not use all of our budgeted sub-money this past year. We had a good year as far as usage, but also the ACA Act piece did not go into place in January.
I'm kind of wondering if at some point, would it benefit us to have our own pool of substitutes and pay those benefits versus paying us temporary service?
We have looked at that in the past, and we would, the Advantage, Advantage, yes, okay, the Advantage that our provider, Advantage XPO, has is the staff they use to process those subs, they use for other temporary employment placements. If we tried to go out and do that, we would probably have to have a staff here, four in the morning. Yeah. And, I mean, we, not just one or two people, but some days, what, what's our high sub-use? It'll get close to four hundred?
Three hundred substitutes in any given day.
Yeah.
I mean, last year, we had almost, oh, I have to front me, but about thirty-five thousand substitute orders.
Yeah. So.
It's a phenomenal number.
Yeah.
I wouldn't dare dream of bringing in that many people into our pool, but I was thinking if we had a small pool, maybe twenty-five, thirty or something, that we could use all the time, then we could use from that pool to maybe hire full-time, when we got rid of the higher full-time teachers. Would that be some kind of benefit to that?
Yeah. We, way back, we just used daily rate subs, didn't we? Before we went to contracting it out. We had a payroll set up, but it was just, it was a daily flat, daily pay that they got. But that was before I came here. We were already contracting. And you and I did the analysis?
We did. We did a few years.
Yeah. I think at your request, Mr. Jurney.
And then we did it again a few years later.
Yeah.
A second time. We analyzed what we anticipated cost to be.
Yeah.
To try to run the program internally versus what our cost is with an outside business.
Yeah.
And it was substantially more, especially the initial setup.
Yeah.
Because we would have to purchase the software program and hire additional staff and then have a site for training and bring in continuous training throughout the year. There were several pieces to it, and I can pull that back up if you'd like to see it sometime.
And there, there's a fairly wide swing. I see the billing for the two-week period, and in number of lines of data, it will go from fourteen to sixteen hundred, sometimes up to twenty-three hundred lines of data over a two-week period. So, we see some broad swings.
I don't want to go back and reinvent the wheel, but you guys have done studies and you know that it's not cost efficient. There's no need to do it, but I was just curious, I didn't know if we ever looked at that.
I'll tell you one thing we did, you were talking about training teachers and creating a pool. I was, I get to sign everything, resignations and everything else, and I even ask the people in HR one day, have we lost all of our special ed EAs? Are they any layoffs, is the term I used? And they told me they were really surprised how many of those now have teaching jobs. We have so many of our people, if you have the certification and a degree, that go into the EAs or go into, you know, even special ed or regular ed EAs, it's a great opportunity for somebody that doesn't get a job initially to get the feel for it, and the principals get to know them and get to see their performance. So, every year, a good number of our new employees come from our pool, people who have actually worked as educational assistants. I started doing it when I was principal, and I hired some from our, because I knew as an EA, you know, their work habit, their ethic, how they could discipline children, how they handle things. It's a great way to do it. So, a lot of our employees come, that's a, that's a pool that we draw upon.
Well, and we get some number who are in college, but still, but arrange their schedules so that they, who are planning to get into teaching and who aren't yet certified that do become that, so.
And others just serve simply substitute teachers. You know, you get in there and you wind up in an interim or some situation.
Yeah.
You know, you gave us the high point, and Mr. Young, just, you know, with that conversation, it just made me think, well, what's a low point and what is, what is the average for substitute use in the pool?
It's anywhere from two hundred to two hundred and fifty below. The average number.
Wow.
There are times when it gets higher.
That'd take, if we had a pool, that'd take a hybrid contract to use the first set and then go into.
Yeah.
They have, they're fully pushed to get regulars, but a lot of people just don't want to work that much.
Right.
They want to take the calls when they're calling. So, it's a tough job.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Jurney?
Do we separate the days that are, that teachers are away from school for training of some type of workshop from, and, but they're, they're included in that number that you're talking about on the average of two fifty?
Yes, totally are, but they do report by sick, personal, professional.
Okay. And, well, if we're having, if we're sending a group of teachers to a workshop on a new math program or something, they're, that's considered professional. It'll show up on professional. But do we keep up, when you say the average of two, two hundred and fifty out of the day, would, when we separate that, would it be thirty of those of that average would be out because we have them out, or do we know that?
That can answer, Mr. Oldham. I know we have, we have encouraged our principals and our supervisory staff to try to do training outside of regular school day hours, so we don't run into that dilemma, because it's tough to have people out of their schools and trying to cover in the classrooms, because then we have substitutes in the rooms instead of your teachers. So, that's something we've tried to do for several years, is to eliminate as much in day, during the day training as we could. But Advantage can run us a report based on their software that shows us the breakdown for any given day.
It's rare that we do trainings on Fridays, so the numbers that Ms. Mars was giving you for Friday, some of those were the highest ones. With the requirement for my instructional staff is not to do any training on Friday. So, because we cannot get serves enough subs on this day.
If, if we have a teacher that is to attend a workshop after school or on Saturday, do they get a staff?
A stipend?
Not in all cases. In some cases, they do.
Some of the race to the top, there were times where, and we covered those separately, there had been, there's a number.
Aftered and all, so we can track it back. But, but some of that, some of those did pay a specific stipend at the time in the summer or something like that. When the state uses, we had the fifty-something state trainers, they pay them a stipend, you know, for that, when they do that. So, it kind of depends upon where the pool of money comes from very often.
Teachers are required to perform a number, twelve in-service hours.
Right.
And those in-service hours are equivalent to two days paid. Two of their days that they get paid for during the school year are for doing or completing those twelve hours. So, if they do hours and it's part of those twelve hours, they do get paid for them technically because it's two days paid. Many teachers, though, are so dedicated to their children and their schools that they do, I, we've had teachers with forty, fifty, sixty, even eighty hours of in-service.
And, Mr. Jurney, and we also allocate about one thousand days to the schools and professional days, that's designated among all the forty-six schools, so that they can allocate those days to their teachers who request professional days. The elementary gets a number, middle school gets a number, and high school gets a number.
So, that automatically reduces it five, that automatically reduces the average five days then, doesn't it?
See, that, that's like your ag that has to go to a cattle judging, soil judging, your CTE, they're in a competitive contest, that pool of days we give them, you know, those come from that, and the principals administer that because you have, because a teacher has to accompany them when you send students to those competitive events, a teacher, somebody has to go and accompany them, so that's where they come from also.
We tried a stipend some years back for some of these in-services, and it did not work terribly well. The feedback we got was some of the teachers didn't think it was enough, or they were using it as part of their two days that they had to get, so they weren't eligible for the stipend. But we did, we played around with that, but it didn't, and was it fifty that we did? Do you, that may have been, yeah.
What was a CS this week? What's your stipend on that? We had a CS training for new teachers this week, and of course, their contracts haven't started and all, so we do a little stipend with that. And I forget exactly what it is. They're so excited about trying to maybe make a little money before their contract actually starts. We do that too for those new ones.
They were just happy to be fed, their college students. Three meals in one day.
Get a job too.
All right. Any other questions?
Hardest job I've seen in education associate teaching. Day-to-day hardest job. Walking in that classroom, just cold turkey.
All right. Number fourteen, I think, Mr. Oldham, he's got a couple items, and then we'll, we'll get into any board member's discussion.
I, one of the things that you have a handout for is the State Board approves new teacher license policy. It actually begins in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, but it's some of the discussions we had all along that they did, where they originally were not going to say the levels ones or twos. The State Board took that away because the legislature addressed it. And so, it's not tied anymore directly to that levels ones or twos, but they earn points for three, four, and five. There's some really interesting trends this year, and I'll just say that, I'll just tell this to you, Mr. Zago's been tracking it. Here's one example, and I can't explain it, and I don't know anybody in the state can explain for us. For sixth grade language arts, the number of ones in the state exceeds the numbers of three, four, and five total. There's something wrong with the system. There's something, there's something not working here in this situation, and I think as the year rolls out, more things are going to appear in this, so I don't know. I've seen a trend, oh, and teachers are getting better, folks. They are getting better. There's no question, died in my mind. In fact, the governor said teachers probably did the best job last year. He'd seen, you know, I mean, it just was, but you're not seeing as many fours and fives. We're still above the state average and that sort of thing, but, but there is a trending that's really interesting tied with something in this testing. But that, that's just an example, and I think that's one reason you see the State Board and possibly the legislature saying, wait a minute, let's back up and take a look at this and see, do we have this model down well or not? And that, there's some things going on, I don't know what it is. Another thing, our DI conference starts tomorrow. It used to be DI conference, you know, we have different titles for each year, but that's what you'll best remember it by. And we have about twelve hundred enrolled, you know, for this year's conference, there'll be, you know, a thousand or so, there'll be some not coming, we have people on a waiting list that'll get to come. So, that, that's, at the two Segal schools, middle and high school tomorrow, I get, opening at the high school, Mr. Zago, I think, gets opening at the middle school, because we don't have a place we can seat them all at one time, all of our teachers and all. It's kind of the things that we run into with that. The third item is that you have in your packet the draft of our strategic plan. Now, the strategic plan for the system is not the same thing as strategic planning that you did a year ago when the board met. Because that, that's more operating stuff and all, the strategic plan is some focuses that our staff have looked at, and this is your plan, so we can add to it, change it, whatever we need to do. We have a special board meeting coming up to deal with that. That looks at some areas that maybe as a system that's over forty thousand students, as we begin to grow. Now, we've dated it as fourteen, fifteen. There's some items in there, or four, five years down the road. And if you want to really see some other districts, I mean, you can, if you'll just on a Google, you just say school's strategic plan or school system's strategic plan, and they'll pop up to you from all over the country. And you'll see something very similar to what we're doing here, some things that we think's initiative. We've broken it down into these areas, but one of the things I want to say is, it's a recommendation to you, but it is your plan. And as, as board members change, as we have different boards, I wanted this board who have been the longest and looking at the school system, just finished the budget for the school system, looked at some of our priorities and all, and some of our needs, you have a better feel for it than, than maybe some new people that might come in and just be starting out. So, we've got a special session on August, when is that meeting? Fifth? Fifth? We'll come back, we'll go over it, you know, kind of item by item to look at some of those and what you want to add, alter, change, then that'll be the time for us to do it. But I want you time to look at it ahead of time, so that night, as we open our dialogue, we'll all kind of be able to add to or subtract or whatever we would like to do. Any questions so far, kind of what we're talking about?
How do you anticipate that the strategic plan will be disseminated out into the system? How, how will the rank-and-file educators, parents, et cetera, how are they going to be exposed to our strategic plan?
We'll, we'll put it, we'll put it on the internet, you know, for people to see. But basic, one of the major things, as you look at this, what you're going to see is, in some instances, there's not a cost necessarily involved, but in other cases, it is. Now, here's one example. You know, it's, it's interesting to a county as large as ours with a school system and the road board and the sheriff's office and this, that, and the other, and most people do not realize this now, but if somebody makes application, because we don't have really software that larger places usually have, we have people that, when they make an application and then they get down and we employ them, we have to rekey it and enter it again, goes to courthouse, other things, you're rekeying and entering again. We just haven't gotten to a place where the data is flowing. And at some point, and that's extra personnel. But we'd have to have the same software all over the county. I mean, in all parts of county government, so we can't do this by ourselves. We don't, we don't have the power to do it or probably the funding to do it, but at some point, we've got to begin to look at these things for a county of our viability and growth that we're looking at. So, some items in there begin to open the dialogue with not only us, but other departments and things that we might do. Of course, our primary. Of course, our primary mission is educating the boys and girls of Rutherford County. So if you look at that, if you, you look at the chart that we have, all of these things we do, whether it's building schools or whatever we're doing, it's, it's really things that have to feed into. How does that fit? How does that make us meet that mission of providing for our students and instructionally? So it's trying to give us a focus on those things. And as we build budgets, as we go through, you would expect things that show up on this to come out. Now, the reason we dated it the way it is is because every November, you revisit your building program. You know, so one page in there is that building program from last year. And I can tell you right now, we know from some of our needs and growth that what we thought in November probably is not what we're going to think in November coming up. But, but we have a choice to say, if you're a fairly stable system, and Metro has one, if you saw theirs, they put out a five-year plan. We didn't label it that, even though items in there, when you see the timeline, you'll see it go out four and five years. Because I don't know as a system that we can, with our growth rate and all, that we can say that we're stable enough to say, hey, this is good four to five years. I think we need to revisit it probably annually and build on it and use it as a guide from whoever sits in my chair or your chair, that they have the wisdom of people who have been involved for a while to say, hey, we saw this coming, and we saw this as a need. So that's the purpose of it. And then the community is welcome to see that too, provide influence, whatever you want to do. We've not had one as a district, even though some others do. So I just thought it was a good idea. It's time for us to, to do this thing, collect some of these things together. But it, it's, it's not your, it's not strategic, board strategic plan in that it's our operating plan. It's our future plan. We're beginning to look ahead with, with concepts and software and things that we need from a business standpoint, from an instructional standpoint, from a building perspective that we can do. And we talked about Mr. Clardy and all. My assistant superintendents really put in their part. James Evans is a big component of the others about how we keep parents informed and how we can better communicate with them. So you see one whole section for that's involved. It doesn't mean, we obviously got to have transportation and all. You know, we're doing that on a budget annually. Is there something we see four or five years out there that we need to do? You know, since we're addressing it each year, we didn't think maybe that was a strategic item. But if you think it needs to be, you can. It's just very difficult to predict.
Anybody else? I guess between now and the fifth, if everybody takes time to look over it, if you have any questions. Just call Mr. Oldham's staff. It may, by doing that, it may eliminate some time from the fifth. It may let us move forward. Or you may get a question answered. So that's the only reason I bring that up. Anything else from the board, Mr. Holiday?
Mr. Evans put out a word today that Dr. Gary Nixon had announced his retirement. And he's been a friend of Rutherford County as the executive director for the Tennessee State Board of Education. As that transition occurs, I certainly want to highlight the presence of another friend of Rutherford County in Dr. David Sevier, who's the deputy executive director. If it were to be appropriate or, you know, of, of interest to other board members, I certainly would be interested in supporting Dr. David Sevier as he pursues the opportunity to rise to that executive director position. And I would see benefit for Rutherford County. So I, I voice a, a word of support for, for him in that transition. And nothing is guaranteed. And if our board sees it that way in the coming weeks and months, we might send a note to the State Board of Education, and I thought I would raise that. The other thing that I wanted to suggest is, because of budget constraints, we were not able to put in place pay increases this year. And that's weighed heavily on, on me. And I've thought about this summer, the extra effort that is put in by our custodial staff as well as our maintenance staff when the schools are not occupied and they have that extra opportunity to be able to go in there and get projects done and, and also accomplish things, stripping floors and, and all of that kind of stuff. It's almost like they've been on extra duty as the students have been on summer break. And so I certainly want to extend, and I may, I may end up reiterating it.
Look at the last part of Mr. Clardy's presentation for...
Is it in there?
Tomorrow night.
Okay.
Your suggestion, and so you should see...
All right, well, then we'll cover that on, on tomorrow night. But I, I'm giving you a preview of how much I appreciate those folks. So we'll, we'll do that tomorrow night as well. Yeah, appreciation. I tell you, one line's not enough, but I appreciate them.
Fill in the blank.
Fill in the blank, okay.
I think, I think Mr. Curly that heads up the maintenance is supposed to be here tomorrow night, right, Mr. Clardy? Kenneth Curly, I think, is coming. So you get to express it personally to the person that heads it up.
You know, along that same line, so many of our schoolteachers spend their own money to prepare their classroom for what they perceive to be the best learning opportunity for those students. I know of individual schoolteachers who've spent several thousand dollars out of their own pocket. Budget is always a big problem, getting more money, but not for these educators, these people that you've talked about. Teaching is getting better. I firmly believe that. And I've been very close for all my life to schools. And we've had some schoolteachers, Mr. John Swalford once told me, half of them are underpaid and half of them are overpaid. Well, that's not true anymore. That's not true. These people are doing a great job. They fight all kinds of obstacles. You know, you made a comment to me the other day that you encourage your principals to be patient with, with parents because you, you're going to need those parents, and that's the truth. But those parents need those teachers, and we need to give credit, we're credits to you. And so many of them are going far beyond what's written in their contract to do. So I just applaud them, along with the maintenance crew. You go in, I think Laverne School's a perfect example. It's an older school, but you go in there and it's tip-top. It's as good a shape as they can get it in, and that's, that's quite...
Part of my presentation tomorrow, Mars is welcome. We include some of that thanks, too. And we instructed principals at the principals' meeting, please, this year, especially this year, recognize your teachers and thank them for what they've done. Tell everybody's...
Forward, send along with you our compliments to our schoolteachers, our appreciation. You know, being a member of this board is just a drop in the bucket compared to what they do every day, the obstacles they face. So I'm proud of what we've accomplished as, as a school system and the bulk of that. It doesn't go here, it goes to those teachers who are involved day-to-day with their students.
Anybody else? Nothing else, we'll see everyone tomorrow evening. Where, Jurnan?